Pretty good.
Yes, I did.
That time of years.
Get everybody. You're fast. For this special meeting for July thirty first, the city developer stands to the pledge. By the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a universal liberty and justice law. So we do the budget session first. When you start with your business.
Well, this is a continuation of what, thank you very much. Um, this is just continuation of our discussion that last council meeting. Uh, the Angela, Kelly and the staff and I have admitted the additional cuts needed to get the budget right at eight eighty point nine five mils. And um, that was an endurance session and I owe Angela and Kelly and the staff. She who's here, they have all um, went through it with me and scrutinized it and um, even Angela's helped me make the adoptions of this particular version um, that we will include in the private state form. The things that really drove up the costs this year is of course the IT upgrade. Um, that's probably the biggest source of the updates, but I can tell you it's worth it because the firewall reports made me freak out. The first time I saw it, especially in your city hall, over six hundred scans of our network, no entrance entrances and um, I even break down schedule an appointment by T just to have them reassured. But um, our IT infrastructure upgrades are being, we installed the last forms of firewalls. At the streets department, the water sewer department, uh, the golf course and we uh, we did have some issues with some of those, but overall, we'll get them hammered out and uh, it's for that. I got the first set of firewall reports this morning from streets and water. And all we had did have one debacle where that they acted bad while installing an excellent shift on the scatter system per night. Luckily had no incidents and we soon fixed it and um, now we have firewalls all locations. Uh, the other one was like I said last year, John and Angela discovered during their uh, evaluation of the budget that we were supplementing a lot of our uh, general fund expenditures uh, through the water sewer fund. And we put a stop to that last year and um, it's going to take a minute for the other funds to catch up to where it should be adequately funded um. Because of that, we're not doing that anymore. And so the water sewer fund should be self sustaining because it's an enterprise fund. So uh, we're, I just, uh, so we are pushing the other thing that we do, we're doing is our code enforcement and uh, building inspection activities is probably the other one. I think that's an essential component to pushing us forward. Uh, I told Delvin when he first took over, it's a full time job. He was like, sure, what, you know, whatever it does. And then when he actually started doing it, he is getting involved with a lot of property issues, like we can't enforce certain items because well, they passed away and um, uh, the kids aren't even tracking. They have a property. It's okay. So. Um, we're trying to, uh, Bill himself also helped me a lot with the hat. I've put a lot on him and he's got a done minus the stuff he can't control, which is software. This is where we're discovering how truly the pilot program we are. We've tried uploading it twice and it failed to save his work. So we're, they're having to fix it again. Um, but little things like that moving forward, if we continue to fund these items back. Cause we literally have to cut the very bones uh, just to get to eighty point nine five to maintain the level of service that we're at now. And so uh, I'm requesting that we don't put a check to this because we already made a bunch of cuts to remove bill projects. We do have some funding that we can play around with in other areas, you know, uh, but just not in the general fund. And so the add valour and I'm asking to stay at the uh, asking to raise it to eighty point nine. But that'll adequately fund everything minus projects. We did cut in a lot of areas. We uh, bring our original version that I presented to you two weeks ago. So uh, but uh, and keeping these systems in place and these services in place, this adequate cuts also includes not touching the raises. It also includes um, the KNPF stuff and we reduced the police, we reduced the police salaries to just their base salary now with a couple of percent in there to still offer some wiggle of um, for merit that overall there, we've honored their request in this particular budget. I'd say the software. Angela, if I missed any key points, please let me.
So are we adopting the budget?
No. It's just a draft.
And eight dependent, we shut the number.
Eighty point nine five, yes. And right now where the numbers are, we're at eighty point nine five. And we were able to make cuts to a lot of uh, the service uh, a lot of operational expenses uh, to get to that number. We did remove most of the projects, but like I said, we do have money in other funds that we can fund in projects for that stuff like the two thousand nineteen ten, no, we still have the cash involved with the municipal, with the municipal equipment and capital improvement that we have not touched.
Water sewer still has the water sewer improvement.
Yes, water sewer says water sewer improvement. So um, it's not that we're dead in the water, the general plant. It's just a, it's just a, we'd have to pull from those or uh, Kelly and I have agreed, we're going to become grant writers. For a big chunk of our time to still bundle on these projects. So I'm not giving up on our capital improvement requests, especially for the extras. And then the golf course is one, I'd forgotten that. That was number one on my list. There's a Hanson grant that I think would be nice to get on that project. Um. And we're also going to present some other things to you in the coming weeks. I'm at, I've asked Melissa, they'll be drafting a amendment or not, excuse me. An ordinance, we were doing a blanket update on a lot of things, but the part of that update is to determine who's responsible for weeds, for example. Um, one of the ideas that I'm proposing is whether there's a lot of ambiguity in the code regarding weeds. Uh, who is responsible for what? Cause right now in the curb, someone gave me a complaint using our new ticket system. I got my first ticket and what they were talking about was uh, weeds coming up through the sidewalks and streets. And I have two ways of mitigating it. One, we do it at the city side of things. Or we uh, require people to mitigate their curb gutter. And there's really no clear guidance for me when I was looking through the code with uh, Dolvin and the streets department. That really doesn't define right away. And so what I did is I had taken from the Kansas League of Municipalities, a uh, a ordinance they had for weed nuisance abatement. And it defines it to people that are responsible for weed mitigation up to the center of the roadway. And it would, it would fully define it. However, I've heard more, I've had from talking to you individually, not everyone's on board of that. So it'd just be nice to have some guided, clear guidance so that we can move forward on little things like that. But budget wise, where that's connected is if we do it, then I'm going to need some access to resources for twenty twenty five to accommodate that for believing that. I'd also like to, like I said in the beginning and during my budget narrative, some of these other things I'd like to do is add some raw asset beef up bronze to partner a bit with some park technicians or at least one technician to help him with all the technical stuff. He's great with all the sports, but he's not great with all the other part of running parks. Cause I'd like park maintenance to be in under his way, especially if council decide, if you decide to do the park re-commissioning thing, it would just position him for that.
Since you brought that, I've got brought to mind something with me budget wise, looking at future, if we do go that way, then his funding is going to be through the school board. So the expectation will be that our budget will be reduced.
I may take the pool over too.
That would be my proposal.
All, all things are negotiable for what we want to and do, if they're agree to do, to have a way of version. So I was trying to go through the budget overview today and look at pluses and minuses. You think it's all supposed to zero at some point, right?
Yes, I did.
So can you go through that overview? Cause I could get things to work out.
Well, that's for, that's probably what Angela scrutinized it by me and we corrected a lot this morning. Um, and the other one too is to the state form. Is what we're relying on. By the, the general fund, the projected revenue. You have, uh, generally speaking, you got the general fund and everything there mixed with the library is what comes out of the general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, my explanation, Angela.
The add left task levy is what affects the library and um, general fund. If you're looking at the add valour revenue that's coming into your library and your general funds, you will notice that like the general fund went down. And so the library had to increase because trying to correct the errors of twenty twenty two budgeting. And so John and I, we tried to estimate pretty good this year, but of course then we didn't want to get too high for twenty twenty four. So that's why we did what we did last year. So they are getting more mills, but their amount of dollars that they're getting is about the same.
What we're not sure about is my original, my original, uh, I based my original numbers off of the form that Shelley gave us, but when Angela entered those stuff into the uh, into the state form, when we accounted for TIF, it reduced the, it reduced the add valour, add valour and we're not really, I'm still wrapping my head up, the interaction between TIF financing and uh, budget. So right now we're just relying on auditors to help us through this as well as uh, the state form. Cause the TIF does some weird mathematical things that we need to condition guidance off of our others on how that works.
So a little little background, a little explanation. My understanding of how this works is we do our budget based on dollars. If those dollars get converted into mills based on assessment, this handed down, estimated assessment handed down to us from the county. Yes, um, so all these are theoretical based on the assessments coming in the way that we're prepared as well. Dollar, the dollar amounts in these could change a little bit based on us, I suppose.
But I, the, the, the dollar amounts match what is in the state form, which is what we're relying heavily on. So any change that I made to the dollar amounts to the stuff here is what I also within the state form. And the state form is what I'm relying on. Make sure that I'm within budget or eighty point nine five mils. Cause they have their calculation. We enter in their stuff that they've told us to enter in and it all equal, it equals out. So that's why we had to drop an additional amount of money from what we, you were tracking last council meeting because uh, when we entered all the stuff and then TIF made us lower, uh, take off even more.
So every time we put a property in the ten district, that lowers what we get to spend like in the general and the uh, library. It changes the mills, it lowers it. So just because your set valuation was like eighteen million, when we actually get down to it, once we put it into the state form, it dropped to seventeen million. And even less for the what, twenty twenty three. I mean, it's, I mean, TIF's great, but we just got to remember that when we're trying to budget things. But we need to be aware of that.
Further than mine that would have come to us.
It goes into the TIF fund. Yeah. From getting the money is just not getting it to the general fund.
Bigger changes for the library and then of course adding Dolan's. So probably see like funding should from streets and administration to.
Well, we did add like a position, so.
And we did lower the streets, uh, but uh, salaries to account for that, not fully.
When you look at these revenues, um, Dustin, uh, you know, some were wildly, is it what we rejected and what actually happens or just? You know, sometimes they're way off. What's the story?
Do you have one in mind here?
Estimate, uh, budget and actual.
These are a certain portion that you're looking at.
When you look at the pool maintenance fee, we did a twenty twenty two budget of twenty five thousand. We actually brought in twenty five thousand two, two hundred and seventy dollars fifty two cents right on the monitor. But now all of a sudden, is it that we're going to go up our twenty, uh, twenty four budgets, thirty nine thousand six hundred?
Yeah, you guys wanted to raise the pool.
Maybe raise salaries.
Yeah, oh, good. There you go.
That's based on, you know, their salaries.
So when we look at the twenty twenty three of that, I am, we're right on track. So when you go to the air revenue. Um, where's the?
Thirty two fifteen.
Yes, we estimated twenty twenty two, it actually was about ten thousand dollars less. We estimated forty five thousand and it was, ended up the revenue was thirty five thousand five hundred sixteen. Then the opposite happened. We budgeted low at thirty thousand for twenty twenty three and now we're estimating our, our revenue is going to be at forty thousand. So it's, you know, it's doing this. Is there a reason?
Because when you, well, we look at what we have made so far this year, right? And we try to make an educated guess for where that falls.
So it's going to be quite a bit higher than what we.
Well, is this based on the projected amount, what we can see? It's not a foolproof plan.
Right.
I, I relied a lot on Angela and Kelly to go through these trends to help me.
Airport fuel prices were also higher last year.
Yeah.
And yeah, so like that comes from like, um, millennials electric pays us.
Right.
And like fuel prices, our fuel and then uh, Hana Ren.
Yeah, like airports are wild card.
Yeah, it is.
I know that one year, I think they said that our fuel was cheaper than other.
Well, like I had to, I had to prove to FAA that we had at least thirty two thousand dollars in expenses um, over the last few years to be able to get this free thirty two thousand dollars that they were giving out. And so it took me twenty two and twenty three's fuel sales or fuel uh, purchases, us buying fuel to make up that thirty two thousand. So it's just different every year. So you're just.
So go to where the maintenance fee. So maybe that's when I'm, that's what I, that's what triggered my eye. Oh, maintenance fee, this is a revenue. Yeah. So we're, we're not talking about wages. We're talking about a substantial rise of revenue. Why is that?
And the full maintenance fee because you're right, you guys.
That's right.
Thank you. Really true. I, the philosophy that I was given by my, by what I was training, all my colleagues taught me is always been low on your revenue for as much as possible. And um, then base your, uh, but then base your uh, then base your uh, expenditures off of the revenue that you get at break up. And um, I'm, I, I may be local, uh, I may have predicted lower in a lot of things. You know, this for that, based on that model.
And the more you do it, the more comfortable you feel with your guess. So um, I'm anticipating this time you'll evolve a little.
Yes.
More percentage than you may have.
And like I said, I had a, I have a good team like Angela and Kelly both have scrutinized it with me. Uh, usually I, I present them the latest draft and then Angela and Kelly like, we need to meet and correct some things. And that's been kind of our pattern. What we would like to do differently next year is now that I've got my feet wet a little bit, I'd like to start. Like, I would like to actually follow the budget calendar a little closer. Cause we would be doing, we would have had all, most of this done by May, but that just didn't happen this year.
You tried, you did.
Yeah, but I, I didn't read my mark this point as well. So that's on, that's on us for that. And this form is what I'm going to use next year. I like this a lot better than what was being used. So I'll just plug the numbers in. Um, and we'll start our estimation process. Uh, aim for many time for it. So that way it gives us plenty of time to correct. And uh, enter the step into the state wall.
That wasn't too uncomfortable with the TIFs?
Well, I don't imagine people are happy about it, but uh, I think the main, the main thing is uh, as long as I keep up with CPI. CPI is a five or a four and a half to five percent over the last twelve months. That's the main thing that I'm concerned about. Did you all look through the community grant applications that gave you a well next? Or would it have been helpful by included it with that?
Probably not with this package.
Okay.
Come in, I mean. All right. Just walk over there.
The community grants is just to start. I just included the stuff that was there last year because I really didn't know. We really didn't know which way you wanted to go. I left economic development the same as last year. The only thing that's different is the sugar products is a particular I'm not creating a section.
May I comment on that?
Sure, come on.
So I did notice that. I think it's fifty one hundred. Oh, so um, I don't know if there's room to squeeze that back in, but you know, when the merger happened, we did come to you and ask that you not have that piece because we really need that for our second staff person, which is kind of hard, by the way. So if our uh, budget doesn't give that fifteen thousand four, that was part of the allocation that we needed for the merger to happen so that we could continue those services. So uh, and I don't, it doesn't sound like you got a, my application that um, our, my line item, including the chambers is really a multiplier. So it is my job to multiply the money you give me into the tax base. Uh, so just kind of a list of a couple of things that we do in our office. If you don't know, most of you do. Business planning, pro forma, finance, packaging, entrepreneurship, professional and personal development, youth development, grant writing, housing development, food development, workforce and Simmons job match services, marketing resource direction, membership services and shop load. So if there's room to get that fifteen, fifteen thousand four hundred back into the budget, that will let's continue the robust level of services that are currently providing. The volume in my office is extremely high. It is unsustainable for me to do all of that by myself. So yeah, any questions? I would be glad to answer them.
The condition, are you, are you pleased with their allocation? It was a thirty five.
No, it wasn't a change to it. So I'm fine with that. I understand under, you know, things are tight and there has to be cuts made. So I understand it. I'm fine with it.
Was the fifteen four?
Yeah. Page just on.
And you've had it thirty six. At thirty thirty six is where economic development is at and then thirty seven. Uh, community grants, zero one zero, that's thirty six. It's a second.
Do I have any questions?
Questions, but I would like to stay and I would like to see states that are extra funding. So. All about that.
Yeah, I feel like that's no different with your letter.
Agreed, agreed.
Absolutely.
Feel version is double. Impairments. Proved us when you convert it.
Same ones. Two, there's all two.
One part time and they'll help. Yes. So police also reduced their budget this year because they were paying for their enforcement when I first got here. And so we continued that until the end of twenty twenty three and twenty four. So just to generate.
What's when the stat be back on this?
I've really gotten a lot. I mean, they would like to do their project.
Yeah.
But we didn't set the bill, the R and R rate kind of, yeah. So they're kind of just.
So we're going to support that municipal equipment and grants to offset it. Like I said, it, it's stored at a lot of that. It's just the, uh, the result of what you're using water guns to settle at that. So it's, we're adapted to it. And we won't be doing it in all of them. No. So it's not a gradual thing. It's, we're done. Well, again. And now it's certainly John started last year's budget and I'm just continuing. Talking about the history of the little.
Oh, yeah, something.
Doing the K P N A.
Uh, that's what our request is.
Okay, then I have this to say about it. I'm fine with that. But if we're, in my opinion, increasing that bond for the streets firm, and I want to see more accountability of what our officers are doing on a daily. I'm tired of people calling me and complaining that why, why are they sitting so much? Why are they watching movies? Why are we? If we're investing that, so we have good officers and we get people here, then I think when we get those reports every two weeks, my opinion, and this is just me, I want to spy officer who did what. Cause if we're putting that in there, so they'll stay here, then they need to put into our community groups that they want to be here doing a little portion for us. And that's, that's truly my opinion, but I feel like there should be more accountability for what they're doing on a daily. If we're putting that money in for them for the long term. Cause all of us have to have accountability in our jobs every single day. So if, I mean, if I don't do my job, I'm the only one there, I'm going to get fired. So if we're investing that, which I'm not against, there needs to be some more accountability for what they're doing on the daily. In my opinion, and Amon can speak on that, but that is my opinion.
So I don't know how well you can hear me. I'll have my earbuds. I wasn't planning on the meeting till Thursday, but I did comment in the in the comment. I believe that the report that we submit, I can break that down to each individual officer as well. So don't quote me on that. I don't have it pulled up right now, but I believe I can. And if not, I know we can create one. So if you're wanting to see that respectively for what what each officer does, that's that's absolutely fine. That's not an issue at all. I would say that officers are setting because they're doing their job. I will not ask our officers to write citations though. So if anybody's insinuating that, that won't happen because that's not, we're not a revenue for the city. Our job is compliance and education through traffic enforcement and other things. But I I do not and I will not require my staff to write citations. If they so choose to write a citation during a vehicle stopper encounter, that's fine. But for those of you that were on the council, when I started, I made that very clear in my interview seven years ago that I do not believe that's how police department should be ran is through issuing of citations. If an officer wants to issue one, that's fine. But I don't believe that's that's how law enforcement should work. So and I guess I would just challenge all of you. If you're getting complaints on things, please get them to Dustin or myself because if a complaint's just never given to us, they can't be dealt with.
Ticketing system.
Right now, the issue I'm having with the ticketing system is I'm the only one that can see the tickets because they have IP blocker. I've had several people trying to sign in and they just it just cuts them off. I've ran into that problem. I tried to access it from home. So I'm working with tax support to get into those IPs. But yes, eventually can they can you can the complaints be followed to that?
Yeah.
I can just try to train these people, you know, certain people, hey, just just keep and that that takes burn off the Darcy.
Yeah.
You know.
People have to say who they are. Can you just honestly, because I think you have to say who you are. Right?
I agree. It requires it when you
Does it? Okay.
has to create a law.
They have to put their name, their hand, their ass.
Oh, no.
Yes, okay.
I mean, that doesn't stop people from saying like making up something, but it does request them.
At least they have to. I thought it was like.
Yes.
The original one, this this one actually requires a lot more detail. They appropriate their account. Then I update the ticket as I'm going through the process.
And I'm not asking for them. I'm not saying write in citations. I'm just saying everybody in here has to be accountable for what they're doing on a daily. I don't think it should be any different in a twelve hour shift that you should have to be accountable for what you're not asking to write citations. I'm not. That's not what I was insinuating. Just insinuating that I think we need to see who what we're doing in a twelve hour shift. I think that's fair.
What what? And I think what she's talking about too, this is if you don't want to say it too much, but is a citation based law enforcement system like reset of speed traffic, a lot of revenues created from it?
Well, that's what so in towns do, yes.
That's all I've ever known. I think it's it's a kangaroo. It's terrible. So, you know, it has a lot of balances, but that is terrible. And that happens. I mean, it kills the economy because people start to hate your town. They're like, oh, that's where the speed trap is. That's all they know about you. So we're we wouldn't be a great speed trap town. I don't need to see that because that's all people are going to say and up and down. The highway is like, oh, that town. That's the most that so I think it's probably a good move, but I just want to clarify what that is.
Right. And I I agree. And I know I don't believe Darcy was insinuating that we issue citations and do all that. I and I I have no issue creating those reports to show who's taking what calls, what Kate, you know, to in lieu of still provide them the weekly stats where you can show it'll break that down into each officer and what they do. The only thing that's difficult to do in law enforcement is ninety nine percent of our job is uh, being seen, right? Is to to be a deterrent. It's hard to show what that is other than being present in the community, just roving patrol, driving up and down neighborhoods. So some days like today, we didn't have a lot of calls within the city. So a couple of options, they just drive around, drive through the the residential business and stuff like that. Or set in certain areas in town and and run radar or be vigilant on the highways. And and I'll be honest with you. I'll tell you last week, I I told the officer spend a little more time at the office because as hot as it was outside, that is super hard on a vehicle to be sitting out there running. And as you guys can all see, at least I noticed on my way to Wichita yesterday, the price of gas is starting to go up. It's two sixty five or three sixty five in Wichita. And I think it went up ten cents on Saturday when I went to get gas. So in order to try to hot hot somewhat offset that cost of fuel and in the sheer heat we were having last, when the guy asked officers spend a little bit more time in the office. Some of them were sitting down, doing some of their online training they can do to try to offset some of that time. Some of them came into the office to work on reports in the office in lieu of working on them in the vehicle. And again, I was just trying to offset that with just the sheer heat, the wear and tear in the vehicles, the price of fuel. So it's kind of one of those things, but I'm happy to provide those reports to show what each officer is doing. But I would also caution you, just because an officer statistically may not show that there is as high as another officer, doesn't mean they're not doing their job. I don't require each officer to do specific things unless it's a task that needs to be done. I believe collectively, our job is to get all tasks done, no matter who does it, as long as it's getting done. And ultimately, after the end of the day, that we are all pulling our own weight. But it's 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 just because the stats may not show that Officer A made twenty traffic stops to ten building checks. And Officer B only did three and four. That doesn't mean they still weren't doing their job. They may have spent more time in the neighborhoods or other facets of their of their job. It's just hard to articulate that on paper, I guess. That's I would just caution you that it does be, it does become difficult. And then it does build a little bit of animosity within a police department. And I know that from experience working when I worked in Great Bend, that we were each graded in a sense by what our stats were. And we were required to reach a certain stat. Every month, we were required to write so many citations. We were required to have so many DUIs. We were required to do all these numbers of things. And if you didn't, if you didn't reach them, you were called in and you were talked to. And it does create a lot of animosity within the ranks of each officers and amongst themselves, and it can create a competition. And that may sound like a good thing, but sometimes it actually becomes a bad thing because then I feel like we are setting up our citizens for failure because they're trying to go out and compete against one each other and 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 not in a way we want them to compete. So again, I have no issue providing those the statistical data for each officer during the reporting period. And I would also note, I think I think Mr. Stanball did mention it. It's it's hard to hear. The audio is not great. Obviously, as you guys know with the owl, those of you that have zoomed in, that we did take the majority of our raises for the police officers out of our salary line item with the exception of Deanne, because she was not she would not be eligible for the KPNF. So as suggested by the mayor last week and in his discussion with our staff, the staff overwhelmingly agreed, yes, that if the city were to provide us with KPNF, you're looking at a long term succession for our agency and you're looking at building a long term commitment to each staff member as opposed to the immediate gratification of, you know, a yearly raise. So.
Speaking of that, Chief, I think, you know, mildly concerned when I raised that wasn't that we couldn't have races. It was that, you know, making sure everybody felt like we didn't want people to feel like, hey, the police department got this and a rage, you know? That was more of a fairness thing than a financial thing. Somebody if the council wants to do something different, they can. That was just a suggestion, but if they were happy with that suggestion, that's good. So that's great. And that was my thought was you know, is it fair and equitable to everybody else? You know, that's all it was.
And I understand that. I actually had that conversation with Mr. Hamel at the golf course. Him and I are probably a dust that can share. The more two vocal department heads within the city and aren't afraid to kind of say what we have to say in an apartment head meeting, right? You know, when we're on our Tuesday meetings. And so I actually approached Mr. Hamel about that. And I said, I want your honest opinion. I want I want you to tell me what you think. If what do you think and what is your staff going to think if we get this? Because only we are eligible or the fire department would be if they were full time, but volunteer they're not. I said, that's not fair, right? That's how I would look at it. And he laid it out that no, actually, it is fair because these are the, this is the way that profession is going. These are the things you have to do to continue to to build your agency, to be an agency that people want to work for so that we don't go sixty days without a single applicant. And he really, it really surprised me in a good way that that he believed that and he felt that and he, you know, he actually said he was proud that I do think long term and I don't just look at the instant gratification. And the first part of your your statement, Mayor, I don't believe that that you 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 thought of that situation in any bad way about as far as us not getting raises opposed to this, but I believe it's if that's what it takes for us to get that, it's 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 more than an even trade off, right? Like worry, we would still be getting the better end of that stick. And you know, I may I make no bones to that, that that it's significant benefit for us. And again, if that's what it takes to do it, we're more than willing to give up our, you know, any twenty twenty four raise that if that's what the council so chooses to do in 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 lieu of, excuse me, in order to get that that retirement package.
Well, so the guidance that I have so far is to keep somehow figure out how to reincorporate the Chamber of Commerce funding back into the budget. That's the only clear guidance I've gotten so far. And to also have more accountability of the PD reports by Officer Rich Chief that said he's willing to provide. Is there any other then? Is there any other guidance that you want us to make out? What other communication type initiatives are we talking about aside of the ticketing system? For a lot of it can be funded differently, can't it? Yes, yeah. A lot of it, I'm just trying to use the tools we already have, like my email list. The ticket I got was actually a direct result of me descending like how to of how to do it. And I've also got the ticketing system itself. A lot of networking, a lot of communication. I try to communicate with our business leaders around the area. I like the idea that was presented earlier, CEO lunch and you know, to continue to try to, you know, build our our relationships with our stakeholders in the area. The bulletin board is something we can do. I'm going to work with the prison ministries to see if they can build one for us. I've also got them working on the suggestion box. I know how some of you might feel, but I just ran an anonymous suggestion box in front of City Hall right next to our billing thing that just people can slip suggestions and stuff that we can check. Chief, alternatives to try to increase our communication in response to your suggestion.
Those are good. Those are good things. And you know, as long as they're seeing progress, that's all we can ask. We're not going to be perfect right away. We just keep making progress, you know? So if we do have a problem, we just go right back. We're not there yet. I think it speaks to what Justice said. We're never never, I mean, but as long as we can keep getting better and keep pushing and keep trying, when there is a problem, people will will realize, wow, they've really come a long ways, you know, and it helps.
And just some additions like staff, I have been pretty amazed with some of the innovations that the staff has helped me make. Like, you know, give me a suggestion. You know, I bring it to a staff meeting and usually they come up with something that I just was like, wow, I never thought of it. And even though we're the lean year is not an enjoyable time of year, and also it can be a blessing in disguise because we can reexamine our internal processes and we have better service delivery using the minds that we already have. So not to mention the grant writing, not to mention the other funds that we can use. We were going over, if you if you look at the to the bond, the to the bond piece, we have an extra three hundred thousand that we can use towards another bond. If you if you think we have a project in there. Um, so there's a number of options that we have to fund stuff, not just through the general ledger as well that we can tap into. And so even beyond this budget year, I'm going to be asking you to help me generate ideas. Like nanniescaping, you know, trying to find innovative, cost effective solutions to solve some of the problems.
I think I'm trying to figure out really, you know. Here at reading, two and fifteen four. What are you? Darcy, okay, there we go. Well, what's the end?
Okay. Hey, real quick. So what does everybody think about curbing or just like a real fast? There's something meaning to take our or I mean, if I were to ask you right now, I mean, you raised the question to this one. That's a good thought. I mean.
Twenty twenty five. Yeah, budget wise, I we sold our curb regime or curb template because the guys didn't want to do it anymore. To Kyler. That's it, you know? I'm not having meaning to be fixing our curves. Whether we do it ourselves or somebody else.
We do have that fee that we use every year when we just author, and that's separate funds, not in this. Um, we just, as you approved a couple of months ago. They will be doing that set of curves. Well, clearly, so we're going to continue to do that strategy that Troy and I had to start with downtown in the wonderful.
Biggest trade issues, ours, still, too.
All right. So we're going to the next part of the agenda. Which is your evaluation, right? Or is it executive session? You know, I like that. Why it's okay. Come with that speed.
Yeah, so. I'm like, Kelly, we confused the stuff we got back from the partners and those envelopes. Sorry, can I suppose to go through those? I think without testing. I will don't think we're having recommendations or that can send I just read it or just read it.
Live on, live on. Was this forced to put them in, put them back in here now?
Uh, you guys have just asked for them to be sealed by the department before they gave it to me. So I wouldn't see them. So that's just what I would give in by each department.
All right. So like a motion to go to executive session for how long?
Definitely twenty minutes.
You know, that's just meant my original post on the agenda because I put me in that.
I'm going to include my stuff only because she is working very closely. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm moving on to executive session. Discussing on the first performance of my logic personnel with the city council and the mayor and city attorney until six forty.
All second.
All right, Councilor Chris feels made a motion to go to executive session with the city attorney, council, mayor, city clerk. Uh, sorry, not the city clerk. Until six forty, Jessica, you said the motion. All right. Here we go. Close. Our motion carries. So I just want to rotate these roles.